Good evening. I am Mayor TJ Colley. Welcome to the May 12th Town Council Regular Meeting. This is our second virtual meeting and is being facilitated electronically via Times Live Meeting, Teams Live Meeting to maintain the safety of town residents, staff, and the Town Council, while following guidelines related to social distancing and public gatherings. While active citizen participation will be unavailable during this meeting, public comments and public hearing comments were accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. This meeting is being streamed simultaneously on both the Town of Morrisville Facebook page and the Town of Morrisville website. On Thursday, May 14th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on the Town of Morrisville social media pages. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future Town Council meetings, or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. I will now recognize Town Clerk Eric Smith to conduct roll call of council attendees. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Johnson? I apologize. Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Ralph?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
And Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councilors present.
Thank you, Town Clerk Smith. We are now at Item 3, Action Items. I will entertain a motion at this time to invoke Rule 19 to conduct this meeting virtually. I recognize Councilmember Ralph. Councilmember Ralph, will you make that motion, please?
I make a motion that we invoke Rule 19 so that we can commence with the May 20th, May 12th Virtual Council Meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Ralph. Do I hear a second?
I will second that motion. I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Ralph and a second from Mayor Protam Johnson. Town Clerk Smith, can you please do a roll? Call vote.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Ralph?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We are now at Item 4, is the adoption of the regular agenda. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does any council member have any such conflict? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt this evening's agenda? I recognize Councilmember Ralph.
I move that we adopt this evening's agenda, May 12th Council Meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I hear a second from Mayor Protam?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate when Eric Smith calls your name.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Ralph?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the regular agenda carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We are now at Item 5, the Consent Agenda. We have two items on tonight's consent agenda this evening, a signed permit requirement item and an NC Part of Grant and Master Plan Adoption for Crabtree Creek Nature Park. Do any council members wish to pull either of them off for a discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve, please? I recognize Mayor Protam Johnson.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
I hear a motion from Mayor Protam Johnson. Do I have a second, please? I recognize Councilmember Robati.
Second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion from Mayor Protam and a second from Councilmember Robati. Can you please indicate your ayes or nays to Eric Smith when he calls the roll call vote?
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Ralph?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve the consent agenda carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Item 6 was for items pulled from the consent agenda. There are none. We're moving on to item number 7. And this is public comment. Town Clerk Smith, will you please provide the summary of any public comments submitted?
Thank you, sir. One public comment was received for tonight's meeting from Mark Dixon, asking that the Town of Morrisville take a position to promote outdoor recreation and preserve the Odd Fellows Track by encouraging the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to deny the Wake Stone mining permit and encourage the RDU Airport Authority to sell the land to a conservation fund. That was the single comment.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that. We are now at Item 8, which is Council Comments. First, I will recognize Assistant Manager Brandon Zudima for an update on the Reconnect Morrisville effort.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and members of Town Council. As you know, Governor Cooper opened Phase 1 of the Relaxing of the Stay-at-Home Order on Friday, May 8. The Town of Morrisville has now implemented our Reconnect Morrisville Plan to give guidance to our staff and the public as to our plan for reopening in line with the three-phase plan for North Carolina. It is important to emphasize that this plan is fluid and could change dramatically depending on the information and guidance we receive from the state and the Department of Public Health. For Phase 1, which began last Friday, we have reopened our parks in terms of our restrooms and reactivated our water fountains following deep cleaning of both by a certified contractor. We are also preparing to reopen our town offices next Monday, May 18. We have intentionally waited one week to ensure that we have our facilities deep cleaned and ready for staff to return to a safe work environment. For Phase 1 of our plan, we will have one or two persons per department on site, and all staff are being provided with personal protective equipment for their safety. For Phase 2, which we anticipate beginning the Friday of Memorial Day weekend, we will open our playgrounds and fitness stations in the parks after having them and the basketball and tennis courts deep cleaned. There will then continue to be daily cleaning of all of our parks' facilities as we move forward from that reopening. We will also, at that point, increase our office staffing to approximately 50% of what would be full staffing. We'll continue to conduct most of our meetings remotely, and all of our meeting areas have been marked to ensure that social distancing is used for any in-person meetings that may be allowed over time. Cedar Fort Community Center will also open on May 18 and will allow for walk-in summer camp registrations while our staff returns to begin preparations for camp, which we expect to begin on June 15. For Phase 3, what we expect to be the final phase of the reopening sometime around the July 4th holiday, we will be returning to more of what you might describe as normal operations in terms of town offices and staff, although we do anticipate some staff will continue to have health concerns or issues as well as some childcare issues that will last through the summer and will result in some teleworking continuing. We'll begin returning to in-person meetings in Phase 3, and we also anticipate being able to open the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center during Phase 3. We'll be beginning to plan for a Reconnect Morrisville celebratory event sometime later in the summer. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have, Mayor or Council.
Do any council members have any questions? I recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. With the phasing, are we still under a declaration of emergency until all the phasing has been complete? With Phase 3, that is the last phase, but Phase 3 has to be complete before we lift it? I mean, I'm just trying to understand, and obviously, we don't have real timelines yet because it's still evolving.
I think that's a fair assessment in terms of definitely still evolving. We are still under a state of emergency in North Carolina. As you know, Wake County elected to let their state of emergency expire with the exception of administrative purposes. We have done the same, so we are being guided now by the North Carolina State of Emergency, and we do anticipate some state of emergency to exist throughout the phasing.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Seeing no other comments, we'll move right into Council Comments. I will recognize Councilmember Steve Ralph.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's great to see you all virtually. The first thing, I have some good news to share for some of the council members and staff, but I spoke with Tony Tiotakis this morning, and he just wanted me to let everyone know that he's recovering well from his chemotherapy, and he's feeling really, really great. So I thought that was a good way to start the meeting. Couple things. I wanted to, first of all, just say that I hope that eventually we can have a discussion on how our small businesses are doing in Morrisville. I know that Town Manager Paige and Brandon are working with our chamber, and I've got some ideas about different things our business community could be doing to raise money or help outreach efforts. I know we're doing what we can to support small business, but if you're listening and you're a small business, I want you to know that we're going to do everything we can to help you and also educate you about some of the other programs out there, like Wake County is about to approve a $5 million Small Business Assistance Program. And so I just wanted to make a comment on that. The other thing is, as we move forward to this council meeting, I look forward to a good discussion on the budget, so I'm not going to make any comments about that until we get there. And I think that transportation is something that's concerning me a lot with the state of the DOT. So not only this meeting, but I think in future meetings, we need to really look at our long-term planning for our road networks, our transportation, and the kinds of things we can be doing to make sure that we're addressing our congestion. I think during COVID-19, the new normal that we get to, I think mobility and walkability and transit is going to be even more important to get people to walk to our businesses to support our economic growth. And I think a lot of towns and cities across the country and the state of North Carolina are going to be dealing with how we get to a new normal. And I think, you know, our strategic plan, a lot of the areas of our plan, mobility, education, economic development, the quality of life, livable neighborhoods, but most importantly, the mental state, because I know that each of you, along with me, miss the sense of community that we have in Morrisville and missing events and things like that. So I just hope that we can, as we reconnect Morrisville, we can also reconnect to our friends and our families because as I'm out there talking to people, that's what they miss the most. The final things, I just want to thank a lot of our hometown heroes out there. There's been so many in Morrisville, like HSNC BAPS, CNT Walk, which is providing food to first responders. And, you know, I just think it's great. And then it's Asian American Heritage Month, so I hope, Mayor, next year, we can do a proclamation on Asian American Heritage Month. But I know we've had a lot going on, but I wanted to wish, we have a large Asian population, and I wanted to wish everyone a very happy Asian American Heritage Month, and I want to thank them for the diversity that they bring to Morrisville. So I look forward to a great meeting, and thank you all for joining who are listening live.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Well, Steve, you're a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. So, well, I would just like to thank everybody for being safe and for staying home when they are able. And for those that are returning to work, please remember to take as many precautions as you're able. We're excited to be starting the journey back to a new normal. And if, you know, for the small businesses, continue to let the town know we are still pushing out small business social media, you know, sharing and announcements. And I think that's an important way that we connect our community even stronger with each other. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Fender and Councilmember Robati. I've been noticing that you have been volunteering for sharing meals with school-aged children that are not able to get their meals at the schools because our schools are closed, so we really appreciate your volunteer efforts in that area. Champions, and I'm a big fan of that. Also, I wanted to share updates from Campo. I am the alternate Campo representative for the Town of Morrisville, along with Mayor Colley, and we have learned that they have reprioritized some of the projects at the NC DOT. Two projects that are Morrisville-focused are the Flyover Project at the McCrimmon Railroad Crossing at NC 54 that is still scheduled to go forward, which is really good news for our town. And we also have another project that is expanding the roadway on NC 54 from 540 to Perimeter Park, and that will be going forward as well. So that is really good news for the town. We did learn, though, that the Morrisville Carpenter Road Project is on hold at this time. We don't know how long that hold will be, but it does affect when we will see construction in that space. I did hear from Councilmember Ralph that he's very interested in connectivity of the town, and so am I. And I hope that as we look at our connecting the town, we include our sidewalks and greenways as a means to make sure that we're healthy as well as able to move about the town without vehicles, and that also helps ease our roadway. So it's another creative way that we can grow our community together while keeping safe. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella, please.
Okay. I don't have a whole lot of comments other than thanks to all the staff and everyone going through these COVID scenarios. I think it's very, very encouraging that NC is opening up, Marshall is opening up, and I agree, you know, small businesses are someone who are really, really impacted. So I hope, you know, we get the businesses rolling, and I'm all in to go and waiting for the day to have dine-in at restaurants. I had one question for Brandon, is any update on the Cary EMS? I know the Cary EMS approached a lot of the towns, and you had given an update. Anything after that that you have heard?
No, we have not heard any additional information on that. We anticipate that that will be something that Wake County will address as part of their budget process.
And is there anything that we need to do more?
I don't believe so. I'm sorry I interrupted you, sir.
No, sorry. My whole idea is like, I want to make sure that our service is maintained and in these measures that our quality of EMS response time is not affected. That's my main concern there.
So I'm comfortable and confident telling you that, based on conversations that I've had, that regardless of what occurs through that process, that our EMS services will not be negatively impacted if there were to be a change.
Okay. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, I'd just like to remind everyone who's listening and also tell your friends that the meals that Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson spoke of that Donna and I have been giving out are provided by Wake County Health and Human Services. They are available Monday through Friday from 11:30 to 1:00 at the Cross Timber Apartments, 900 Golden Horseshoe Drive, and on Saturdays and Sundays from 12:00 to 1:00 at the Preston View Apartments, 1,000 Stony Court. There are also, there are other places in Cary and in Apex that you can get them, but those two are right in Morrisville. You just come up, you say how many you need, it's no big deal, and everybody can, you know, everybody can use a little help sometimes, and we would love to see you out there and picking up a meal. I also want to give a huge shout-out to the HSNC, the Hindu Society, who's providing, I've only been at Cross Timbers, but they provided 150 meals there on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And I think they're doing it at both of the Morrisville sites. I'm not sure about the others. But they've been providing 150 meals three days a week, all volunteer. Volunteer donation of the supplies, volunteer-driven. And so I just wanted to give a big shout-out to them.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fender?
Hello, everyone. Councilmember Robati took part of what I was going to say in thanking the Hindu Society for providing all those meals for the kids that are getting the lunches at Cross Timbers. I was trying to whittle down what all I wanted to say tonight. I guess continuing on with the meals being served at Cross Timbers and other locations across the county, I want to thank the Interfaith Food Shuttle for providing pantry items as well. And then I also went and put a call out to the Kits Creek neighborhood to provide cookies and snacks for the kids, and I have just been totally overwhelmed with the amount of cookies and Oreos and all sorts of snacks that our neighbors in Kits Creek have just really, I don't know how to describe it, but just really exceeded my expectations by a long shot. So I really appreciate the neighbors here in Kits Creek. Also, lastly, I'll just say that, folks, please go out to the Town of Morrisville homepage, and in the middle of the page, there's a block there where you can click on and provide comments about the Crabtree Creek Nature Park. From understanding Eric's email today, that portal will only be open through tonight. We only have a few comments, so if people can get out there and add their comments to that portal, I would really appreciate it. As many of the elected officials in our county have seen the past couple of weeks, we've all been inundated with hundreds of emails regarding saving the Odd Fellows Track by Umstead Park. So we see that many of our residents want to save our green space. So we need to provide that same type of feedback with the Crabtree Creek Nature Park. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, good evening, everyone. I'm going to try not to repeat all that's been said because you all did a fabulous job. That's the beauty of being toward the end of the line. So I just want to reiterate about helping our small business community. And Martha, this is kind of a heads-up maybe and a request. Wake County is going to be hopefully releasing the details of their small business loan program on Monday, the 18th. So if we could maybe share that out to the council, and then we, in turn, each one of us, can share that through our networks, our social media, our newsletters. I think that's going to be critically important for our small business community to understand the details of that program. That's going to be available for Morrisville small businesses. So that's kind of a request there. Two other things I just want to mention briefly. Those that are in need, and Councilmember Robati and Councilmember Fender know this even better than I do. Those that are in need of food, there are lots of options to get a hot meal right here in Morrisville. There are also options for folks to receive donations through the Food Bank of Central and Eastern North Carolina. And so those that can, I would encourage you to participate and donate to the Food Bank. We have a young man here in Morrisville that has set up a GoFundMe page, and he is raising money for the Food Bank. And I want to thank VP All for his efforts. And those that would like to donate, if you go to my Facebook page, it's Liz Johnson Town Council, Liz Johnson, Morrisville Town Council, I have a posting there with his GoFundMe page. So please go out there if you are able. Those of us that can surely, it's greatly needed these days, and the Food Bank is a wonderful organization. The other thing I also want to mention is that this week is National Police Week. So I want to give a huge shout-out to our Morrisville Police Department and thank them for all they are doing on the front lines of this efforts here with COVID-19. And as a part of National Police Week, our Morrisville Police Department has scheduled a blood drive, which is tomorrow. So those that would like to give blood, there are still, I looked probably about an hour ago, there were still some openings available throughout the day tomorrow. The blood drive goes from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and it's right here in Morrisville at our police station. So go out to the town's either website or the town's Facebook page or my own Facebook page, and you will see some information about how you can register to give blood tomorrow. So there are lots of ways that this community is stepping up these days in the fight against COVID-19, and I am incredibly proud of all those that donate their time, that donate their money, and of course, all those that are doing the right things to help us get through these phases so that we can open up again safely and that we all come back together again and nobody's missing. So thank you for the time to speak tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Assistant Manager Zudima, for the reconnect update, and to my fellow council members for sharing observations of what our residents and businesses are facing and the hometown heroes that are doing the best things that they can, which is giving of themselves. So as you know, we are now in Phase 1 of three phases to safely move towards the new normal. As we begin to relax these restrictions, it is vitally important each of us continue to make responsible choices, stay at home as much as possible, like we are doing tonight, and be sure to use safe, smart practices to protect ourselves and each other when we do leave the safety of our homes. This pandemic has made life difficult for both our residents and businesses. We can't afford to let our guard down and squander the progress we gained these past few weeks. This virus is extremely dangerous and will continue to be a threat until there is a vaccine. Each of us must remain vigilant and committed to maintaining social distancing at all times in order to move into the next phase. Please remember, we are all in this together. Thank you for doing your part. So at this time, we're at Item 9, Public Hearings. I'll recognize Dylan Brookhouse to present the first of our two public hearing items. Mr. Brookhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I will be updating the council on Item 2020-57-Zero, which is the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment before the public comment session is open. So just as a reminder, this item was briefed in March 10th, so I will do a quick overview. Let's see. Oh, there we go. Okay. Sorry. I was figuring how this works. So just a quick overview of what staff is proposing in this amendment. The first is the removal of the standard based on the ITE Trip Generation Manual. And the second is the addition of a standard for driveway spacing between two driveways on the same side of the street on major and minor thoroughfares. Again, staff is recommending the proposal mainly because this lines, it brings our UDO more in line with other Wake County municipalities, including the spacing standard. including, um, by, including, um, the standard, the spacing standard itself, and also no other county would, would, um, uses the Trip Generation Manual as a, as a regulatory, I guess, guideline for driveway spacing. Um, addition, it just really help, it would help infill projects and dealing with lots that have narrow widths to be able to allow full access. Um, again, um, this item went to the Planning and Zoning Board on February 13th. Um, it was recommended for approval with a vote of five to zero. And, um, the, we're on next council meeting, so May 26th, this item will be brought to action for both the resolution and ordinance. Um, that is, that is all I have, Mr. Mayor. Council giving you the questions, I'll be, I'll feel free to answer. But, um, other than that, um, yeah, it'll go to open session. And just want to make sure to remind you, um, Mayor Colley, that, um, they'll be open for 24 hours after this meeting. So just make sure to include that in the motion. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brookhouse. Yes. I don't see any questions or comments from my fellow council members. So at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Are there any comments that received to date?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were no public hearing comments received for this item.
Okay. Uh, that, so I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing at midnight on May 13th. Would any council members like to make that motion? I recognize Mayor Pro Tem Liz Johnson.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at midnight tomorrow night, May 13th.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second? I recognize Councilmember Robati.
I second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Johnson and a second from Councilmember Robati indicating that we're going to close the public hearing as of midnight tomorrow, May 13th. Uh, if Town Clerk Smith could please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to close the public hearing at midnight on May 13th carries unanimously.
Thank you all. We are now at item nine B. I will recognize Emily Langston to present the second public hearing item. Ms. Langston.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I am presenting agenda item 2020990, a request for voluntary annexation into the town of Morrisville. The subject property shown outlined in red is commonly known as 610 Airport Boulevard. It's located along the west side of Airport Boulevard between Jerusalem Drive and McCrimmon Parkway. The property is specifically identified by Wake County PIN 0756142412. The property owners have submitted a request for voluntary annexation to extend the town of Morrisville corporate limits to include approximately 2.595 acres of property. The property is currently located in the town's extraterritorial jurisdiction and is owned business activity center. The land is currently vacant. The annexation is requested in relation to a development project for the proposed Wood Springs Suites Hotel. Town staff is recommending approval of the proposed annexation for the following reasons. The town has historically honored voluntary annexation requests. The petition meets all statutory requirements. It would expand the town's tax base. And with that increase in tax base, the annexation can improve the economies of scale and the delivery of town services. Council acted on resolutions A and B at the April 28th meeting and set the public hearing for this evening. Action on the annexation request is scheduled for the May 26th meeting. Council will be asked to consider the proposed annexation and should either approve or deny the annexation. Consideration of an annexation request is legislative and discretionary. And that's all I have, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. You're, we are scheduled to vote on this on the 26th. Do any council members have any questions or comments at this time? Okay, I will go ahead and open the public hearing in that case. Public hearing being opened, did we have any public hearing input at this time, Town Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Colley. There were no public comments received for this item.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing as well, effective midnight on May 13th, just like the other one. I recognize Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close this public hearing at midnight on May 13th.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, and I recognize Councilmember Robati.
I second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Johnson and a second from Councilmember Robati to close the public hearing as of midnight on May 13th. Town Clerk Smith, if you could please do a roll call vote to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to close the public hearing at midnight on May 13th carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Ms. Langston. We are now at item 10, new items. I will recognize Town Manager Martha Page to introduce the FY 2021 Proposed Annual Operating Budget. Ms. Page.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Town Council. An important tenant of local government management is being prepared, including expecting the unexpected. At no time in my over 20 years of municipal service have we experienced the sustained and unknown future implications of anything like the COVID-19 pandemic. Tonight, as we meet in a virtual setting that was not even legally authorized until two weeks ago, I recognize the importance of being prepared for change and the strength in our underlying commitment and resilience that will be necessary over the next several months and perhaps well into our future. Those same principles, more than ever, have influenced the preparation of the proposed fiscal year 2021 operating budget and capital investment plan, which is being presented to you tonight. The framework of the budget discussion this year is staying focused on the foundational work already completed for many key programs, services, and initiatives, while recognizing fiscal responsibility in both the short and long term. I am required to submit a balanced budget to you for your review and consideration. This year, the balancing process itself became a multi-dimensional process as we forecast and projected revenues for our current and future years multiple times and with multiple tax rate scenarios. This being a revaluation year also required the calculation and reporting of a revenue neutral tax rate. Additionally, other factors, including our continued growth needs, both in personnel and operational support, had to be reviewed and evaluated considering changing and unknown circumstances. These growing needs have been programmed into various revenue capacity levels to illustrate the difficult choices facing us. I believe this proposed budget continues to provide a responsible path forward that advances our strategic plan and specific policy goals discussed by Town Council, but also one that provides future capacity and remains flexible into fiscal year 21 as other critical policy work and discussion continues. The proposed fiscal year 2021 budget was also developed with specific implementation triggers that will facilitate our nimbleness to respond effectively to changing circumstances, if any, as we determine the total impacts of COVID-19 on our community needs and our budget. Tough choices are always part of the budget development process, and this year, those choices were even tougher. The budget reflects a collaboration and compromise amongst the stakeholders to address and meet needs, as well as recognizing the compounded impact of some delays on future budgets. In addition to our careful prioritization of requests, this budget also includes intentional and deliberate deferrals of some items to safeguard our financial strength. Those budget needs can be easily incorporated mid-year, should that be a viable option. We look forward to exploring the budget more in depth with you tonight and in our future work sessions. As Town Council begins their deliberative process, we are prepared to provide more depth of discussion into your areas of focus and insight into the budget requests. We recognize that there are many paths to, to achieve our goals, and staff remains open, receptive, and responsive to your decision-making process in support of a budget that best needs your collective needs and those of our community. I will turn it over to Jeannie Hooks to provide the overview and begin this important process. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Hopefully you can hear me. It's a pleasure to present the proposed budget for fiscal year 21. At this time, I want to provide a more formal presentation as a high-level overview of the proposed budget. It should be maybe 10 minutes. And then we'll continue following a short break with a work session presentation that kicks off a more in-depth exchange of information and provides a question and answers period periodically throughout that portion of the presentation. Mayor, I would ask at this time during this formal portion of the presentation to hold questions and comments until we get to the work session. So with that, we'll move forward. So let's begin. Lessons learned from our past have taught us the importance of staying focused during such times. Evaluation and careful planning to move forward and not lose ground for investments we've already put in motion become critically important areas to focus on. Work and service expectations continue even during the most challenging of times, and that is an important lesson we learned many years ago during the last recession. This budget has proved challenging in many ways. As Martha has mentioned, not one of the, the most difficult, but it's pretty close for me in the years that I've worked with Morrisville. But we remain committed to meeting these needs and the priorities of the community as, as guided by our strategic plan goals, while we are safeguarding our financial condition, condition for our future. Some important budget tools that I want to remind you to keep handy as we review and discuss this proposed budget are going to be the abbreviated budget report document. You each received a hard copy of this and a copy of this presentation. And starting tonight, we're going to employ a strategy that's been quite helpful in the past. It's called the utilization of, of really a frequently asked questions approach. It's a document where we collect your questions and information needs, and this helps to facilitate and manage our question and information flows in, in more limited times. So with our budget development framework, there are a number of significant factors that have worked to shape the framework of this budget in, in this particular year. Our budget development began early with a strong economy. I was very excited by this. And then things changed suddenly. COVID-19 has changed our daily lives, and it's created a recession-like event. This has caused us to, to really anticipate impacts and, and to responsibly adapt and reassess our strategy. We sort of had to start back over. Other essential factor, factors that, that play an important role in the development of this budget is Wake County property reappraisals this year. That had, that action has essentially right-sized property values to current market conditions. And, and its purpose is meant to, to redistribute and equalize that tax burden across our community. This directly correlates to the town's largest revenue engine, Adalorum Revenue, which is about 54% of our total revenue sources coming from property taxes that citizens pay for core services in our community, such as public safety, development planning, recreational programs, just to name a few. Those are very important to our community for the taxes that they pay. COVID-19 impacts have influenced consumer confidence causing an uncertain economy that really influences many of the town's revenue streams. And overall, it impacts our ability to have budget capacity for this year in our forecasting. We've identified available reserves, and we have heavily scrutinized department-based budgets and, and their new requests very carefully. This is something we do every year, but even more so in, in an uncertain economy, you focus on every, every available option or alternatives that you have to build a budget. This budget has been developed with what I feel are very good fiscal management best practices that controls our level of spending and provides for strategies within the year to manage our spending. That's, that's a key lesson learned in years past within our resources that we can realize. It really sets the stage for the town to effectively respond should economic conditions worsen or linger longer than expected. And Morrisville having the reserves that it has goes even further to really help us bridge the gap should we need it. Oh, sorry about that. So with our budget strategy and controls, uh, we, we remain really focused on protecting and preserving our core services. And what I mean by that is really prioritizing needs above wants. We need to recognize and value the investments that we have already had in progress. That's very important to understand. We have already spent money on things that, that we have committed to, but have additional work to continue. We need to remain committed to those, so our good work and investments are not lost. Identifying workload needs and targeting technology improvements that create efficiencies and improved services become very, very important to a growing community. Looking ahead towards our future financial conditions is always fundamentally important in any, any budget year and, and throughout the year in which we perform against that budget. And ultimately, providing options that really help council make these difficult decisions through these processes. Our balancing strategy to meet these goals in such a challenging year proposes carefully balancing the leveraging of our authority to raise revenues necessary to achieve these goals and to utilize our reserves responsibly, combined with the management, the management and control of our spending measures. Those together, those, those ingredients become critically important as we move Morrisville forward. The budget recommends to retain some capacity generated, generated by the reappraisal by setting a tax rate at 36 and a half cents. For transparency purposes, that's two and a half cents lower than the current rate of 39 cents and four cents above the estimated revenue neutral tax rate of 32 and a half cents. So in Morrisville, staying focused in fiscal year 2021, priorities really aim to commit to resources, tools, and people in the right places to meet the uniquely growing service needs and programs that will deliver tangible, desired results to our growing community. We will go into these identified goals that I've listed here in more depth later this evening. So I'm not going to repeat them at this particular point. Many of these are, are, are large and all-encompassing goals. Many of these are large and all-encompassing goals. So our primary operating annual budgets consist of our general fund and our stormwater fund. And combined together, that operating budget represents $38 million and $180,000. The budget was developed in accordance with the North Carolina Local Government and Fiscal Control Act, and what that means is the town manager has prepared you a balanced budget where revenues equal expenditures in all funds. The primary operating funds, which is our focus tonight, really represent our core business plans annually that we set to deliver those essential services and get the work done. The overall budget of $38.2 million is approximately 5.7% of an increase above the original budget, combined budget of fiscal year 2020 of about $36 million. Your base budget at the beginning of the year with adjustments for those market adjustments made has moved up to $32.5 million. New routine additions, that means things that you have put in the budget, the operating budget, that will reoccur year over year because they become a part of routine operations is estimated at about $2.4 million. That will increase your base budget up by about 7.4%. Other non-operating budgets, just for disclosure purposes, these are not operating budgets. That means they are primarily set aside for very specific purposes, such as your MSD Fund or your municipal service district fund. It's more like a capital project fund with a specific district tax levy that affects only the specific neighborhoods that petitioned to be a part of this district, and its purpose is meant to convert their private streets to public standards and take over their maintenance. This is something we did many years ago, and we are on our last project, and we are working to accumulate enough funds to be able to move that last project forward. The other funds, the LEO and the OPEB, are really supplemental retirement-type funds, and they're not operating at all. We are just putting aside those monies for reserves and holding on to them until we need to use them for retirement purposes. The budget proposes to establish also a new debt service fund to track debt obligations, and it's really meant for the purpose of accumulating retired debt resources and to plan for those bond referendums outside of the general fund itself. LEO is law enforcement officers. Martha's sending us a little spelling out of the acronyms here. And the OPEB fund is for other post-employment benefits. LEO specifically law enforcement. The OPEB fund is specifically for all others, which we call general employees. So community engagement opportunities. There's several ways that our community can engage. We have just opened our budget portal today. It will remain open until the public hearing closes on June 9th, but the portal will remain open 24 hours after that, so June 10th at midnight is when we'll close that. Our communication plan also includes periodic social media outreach as council deliberates so that we can put critical information as we hear what your questions and your interests are and questions and interest from the community. We have also crafted a press release that will be formally issued tomorrow, and we have also, we're working on what is a budget highlights video to be posted on the website tomorrow. This is a high-level information video presentation that can be rolled and looped and accessed at any point, and we will be putting it out on our website and our social media at very strategic times. And then, of course, we'll have our formal required public hearing on June 9th. And that has been officially noticed, sent to the News &amp; Observer for meeting those So our budget review calendar is shown here. I won't go over all of the particular dates, other than to emphasize to you, there are a number of planned work sessions that will allow council to discuss and deliberate the proposed budget, other interests that you may have, and really to provide guidance and direction to staff early to prepare for adoption on or before June 23rd. Staff encourages council to put on the table and share your interest early so staff can respond and prepare effectively, and more so so each of you really know what the interests and desires of each other are for your deliberation over this budget as you provide a collective direction to staff. As always, I want to extend my thanks to all that have had a hand in preparing this proposed budget. That's department heads, that's key staff, and to our town manager for her vision and her resolve in such a challenging time, and also to say to you as our elected officials, thank you as well for making the hard decisions but making the important decisions. I look forward to kicking off council's budget discussion during our work session this evening, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hooks. Martha, did you have some thoughts before we go into break?
No, sir. We look forward to speaking with council during the work session. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you both for that presentation. We will now take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 7:10, at which time we have set aside 60 minutes for a work session to discuss the proposed budget after we get a little bit more presentation from Ms. Hooks. So everyone, please be back at 7:10 and indicate that you're back in the chat box. Please silence your microphones now. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to reconvene the meeting. I'm going to pass the microphone back to Jeannie Hooks to continue her presentation on the budget. Ms. Hooks.
Okay. Hopefully everyone can hear me again.
We can.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So welcome back for round two of this exciting budget adventure we're on. As I go through this more detailed presentation, please remember to use your conversation box to indicate questions and comments when you need to. The items above here are the topics, the specific topics, that we will go over and review at a little more in-depth level. Budgeting is all about discussing in layers. I will open up a question and answer period periodically throughout the presentation and ask the mayor or Martha to recognize folks that are in that conversation box if they want to make a comment or ask a question. And then we'll have a final wrap-up Q&amp;A at the end. My presentation at this particular time is about probably 20 minutes or so, not including council's questions. So just putting that out there. Something that I would suggest for council to consider collectively tonight, maybe at the end or at some point, is how you will do your work of discussing and deliberating over this budget. So just planting a seed there for you, something to think about when we get to the end of this presentation. So again, please have your budget tools handy, your budget report, this presentation, and remember staff's going to be collecting and gathering those questions for an FAQ approach to facilitate and manage our time throughout the budget process. So let's move forward to revenues, and let's get started. Again, we are focusing on general fund and stormwater as our primary revenue sources. So our major revenues include really primarily, your biggest source is ad valorem, about 54% to 59%. The collection rate, which is typically very strong in Morrisville, has been lower to account for some decline in collections as we proceed. This was advice from our tax assessor this year that if there was an impact, that might be something to consider, that people might not be able to pay their bills on time, and at some point it would catch up. Tax base has grown from some early conversations we've had about reappraisal process of about 20%. Your tax base components have shifted again slightly for 45% residential and 55% commercial. Projects at various stages, this is new development projects in the pipeline, they continue to suggest that there will be some continued tax base growth for now. I want to recognize, though, that I have adjusted forecasting for residential development revenues down because they have shown a steady trend of slowing. And while we recognize actually that commercial development is on the rise, that's a great thing. There are challenges with some of our revenue sources due to the uncertain economy that have primarily caused a shift from what was turning out to be, what I'd say, a pretty bright economy, a nice outlook for the future for us, to something that's just very unclear and uncertain in terms of the duration, how long it would last, and what it really is impacting and how. We've taken the approach to forecasting very conservatively, as we should, for many of our major sources that we feel are going to be susceptible to economic downturns. Sales tax is your second-largest source, and this is the one probably I'm most concerned with. It represents 14% of your budget. It's very susceptible to consumer confidence issues. There's an indices out there that we monitor very specifically for sales tax, and it is down due to really life being put on hold and people not being able to spend as they used to. This is, like I said, our second-largest source of income to our organization, and I've projected it for fiscal year 20 at $5.4 million. That's a 10% increase from what our original budget estimate was, and I've taken that and flattened that projection to really show or to take a no-growth approach for fiscal year 21 projections as a strategy to essentially safeguard the organization. This is something learned in years past whenever we are dealing with consumer confidence issues or recession-like events, just a smart strategy to employ. And we've done that with several of our key resources. Utility sales tax, for example, is 4.4% of our budget or $1.6 million, and primarily, it's very sensitive to weather conditions, but it can be sensitive to collection issues. So for that reasons, projections have also been very conservative and flattened, meaning no-growth strategy. Video programming overall, we're holding it steady. Statewide, really, we consider this a declining source just mostly to the nature of the market itself, where we're shifting more from cable TV interest to really streaming solutions as we're doing tonight. While it's not a major source, it's really worth me mentioning that investment earnings, to say the least, have been significantly impacted, and assumptions for that reason have been reduced. That source was probably just returning to where it had been many, many moons ago, and suddenly it's now really dropped over 30% in its performance. On the brighter side, the collection of development service revenues are really continuing a strong trend, and primarily that's a result of commercial permitting and our activity for new development in our community. Morrisville is just the location to be and has always been a driver for Morrisville to sustain us in times when we probably needed it most. Permit fees have increased by 12% in fiscal year 20 based on projected actuals compared to fiscal year 19. Fiscal year 20 projections were adjusted to account for these trends in commercial permit growth. However, in my experience, because of this type of source being defined as what is an unpredictable source, we've continued our strategy of a conservative approach in forecasting. It's important. This isn't something, a type of resource where we go out and get people to do businesses in Morrisville. It's more development comes to us situation, and sometimes the trends in the past have always been very up and down year over year. With the opening of McCrimmon Extension through what is probably our largest big assembly of land, vacant land, we should see a bit of an uptick continue in commercial development to sustain us for a little while longer. It is something we have to think about, though, that how Morrisville develops will change in the not-so-distant future when our vacant developable land really runs out or changes from new development to redevelopment, and how that impacts our tax base growth is something we need to probably think about and keep a weather eye on that. A caveat to mention is COVID has not yet influenced development activities from Morrisville. This is, as I've mentioned, really important. If COVID does linger and development activities really begin to react, this will give me pause and concern for really how these revenues might continue in the future through this event. But new development is really how our tax base grows annually, and that's why I watch that very, very, very much. It does also impact other types of development fees, such as permitting fees, as related revenues that are important to Morrisville. So some revenue details. Again, strong consideration was given this year in projecting future revenues in such an uncertain economy. It's just a smart thing to do is pay attention and do what you can and try to put a number on it based on whatever facts and datas that you can analyze and taking advice from our partners, such as North Carolina League of Municipalities. They always try to share information, as such as our tax assessor also sharing, oversharing information this year, trying to help all of us budgeteers out this year. Conservative forecasting strategies were implemented due to the unclear trends in data to safeguard the town financially, to not overextend our potential for capacity. We do this responsibly. This is an important step. We need to try to lessen the burden on our major revenue streams from the ones that are impacted, and we've projected use of less than 3% of expenditures of our fund balance for one-time items. This was intentional to preserve and protect our cash flow should economic conditions really deteriorate during the performance year, because things are very unclear, and we don't know how long this will last. Us having a good fund balance reserve is going to be very important to our cash flow in the first part of the year. Ad valorem revenues do not materialize until the latter part of the second quarter and mostly the first part of the third quarter. So with that said, your largest revenue stream doesn't come in until the middle of a fiscal year, but you're spending starting as of July 1. You need these cash reserves to help you with cash flow, not just your operating expenses, but even some of your projects that we know that we are going to have to leverage, these grant projects, leverage the full amount of the money upfront and request reimbursements as progress is made on some of these. So reserves become critically important even during these times. So smartly leveraging those reserves to kickstart some of these essential items that we have in the budget, really are things that are related to transportation and mobility items that I'm referring to. We have tapped into those other reserves to protect our fund balance overall for the purposes of if the economy does change and shift quickly. We've leveraged the tax rate that really, the intention here is to retain some of that capacity resulting from a reappraisal to reinvest in our community services to meet the growing demands in our future needs. That was the purpose for leveraging that kind of tax rate at this time. Other significant fees really remain unchanged, or we've observed really some minor user fee changes to offset the cost of providing those services. fee changes to offset the cost of providing those services. So let's talk about COVID-19 impacts to our revenues and what assumptions we've made so far. So staff has spent a great deal of time analyzing these revenue sources over and over again and assessing economic conditions that influence many of these key sources. With consumer-sensitive sources like sales tax, they're easily, others are easily impacted from even facility and programming closures and cancellations. The lack of consumer spending impacts sales tax and several other of the items, the other revenues that I've mentioned. And another unique one is really collection rates being down for some of them. That does include ad valorem and vehicle decal fees. That's something we have to take into consideration. In addition, just like I mentioned with investment earnings, having a volatile market conditions impacts that source. So the primary sources of concern that we focused on were ad valorem, vehicle decal, collection rates, and sales tax revenue, of course, investment earnings, and program revenues. For fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, it was important to analyze the impacts and how they might roll into fiscal year 21, as well as analyzing all of our sources effectively. Any loss in revenue, it essentially places more burden on your ad valorem taxes and other revenue streams to make up the difference, or it can lead, really, to a municipality to consider reducing core services or even holding on existing initiatives. Remember mentioning that you've invested monies already in initiatives that are still in progress. So to hold those, it would be as those investments are going nowhere, are not providing a return on that investment. Essentially stalling our progress to really do good work for the community can be a concern. Where we could, staff has recognized potential growth in some sources where appropriate and where we think is fiscally responsible. As I mentioned, commercial permitting, for example, we have adjusted those assumptions for forecasting based on what has been, over the past few years, a solid trend. We've anticipated a surge in some sources relating to what is called a catch-up syndrome for payments. So one there in particular is vehicle decal fees. After having a conversation with our tax assessor, is that while people might not be able to pay it in '20, there could be a surge to pay what they owe as of July 1, and that could result in maybe a surge of catch-up payments. Another opportunity recognized when we were assessing program revenues is looking at MAFC's ability to reopen. It just provides a unique opportunity. If marketed well and generating positive interest, we could really maximize an opportunity there. However, I will say with a caveat there, we have projected conservatively for MAFC reopening revenues as well, but recognizing that we were going to have some expansion in services. So I think I'm going to pause here, Mayor, for some questions at this time. If anybody would like to throw something out there, or if not, I will gladly keep going.
I don't see anyone. Okay. Recognize Councilmember Rao, who has a question? Councilmember Rao?
Would you prefer us waiting till the end? I can wait till the end if that's in the interest of time. Would you prefer that?
Is it a revenue question?
Yeah, it's a revenue. I'll keep my other questions until later, and I'm going to move because I'm dark where I'm at. But the question that I had, I'm going to take my video off for a second. The question that I had was, Jeannie, when we, because they moved the tax deadline back to July, how does that affect our local government's ability to collect the revenue and having cash on hand for our town?
So again, that could affect your collection rate, and it could become one of those sources or revenue items that really play that catch-up game. They still owe the taxes. It's just right now they might not be able to pay it, so it really creates a delayed response. We'll get it eventually and at some point.
Okay, the only other follow-up is that the 14%, you know, of the sales tax revenue is just a major hit. And, you know, with development, the one thing I would have my colleagues think about as we look at the new normal is, you know, with more teleworking and remote working, we also get a lot of build-out in some of our big office parks. So as we go to a new normal, even after COVID-19, there's been a lot of economists saying that, you know, more of the workforce may work remotely. So that could potentially affect development, but maybe we could make it up on more multifamily and things like that because of the need for walkability. It's just something to think about. But we can keep moving on. I might bring that up later.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
So, Jeannie, I do, as far as revenues are concerned, you always do a fantastic job of being, of balancing that, being conservative with being realistic and to what is happening out there in the economy. And as you've said clearly, eight weeks ago, three months ago, you know, things were, it was a different world. So I'm really concerned about the projections that we're making for revenues. And so you make me feel a little more comfortable when you talk about being so conservative and kind of holding ground, you know, no growth. And you mentioned a couple of really key areas where we get revenues. So I guess my real question is, are you telling us then that you are holding on all our revenue sources? Are you projecting no growth of kind of across the board? If you could just kind of elaborate on that a little bit more.
So that I understand, you're really focusing on which ones. I have used the forecasting strategy of a no-growth or flattening approach. Is that what you're asking me?
That's correct.
Okay. So the ones that I talked about for major revenues, which were which were your ad valorem taxes, which were, sorry, not your ad valorem, ad valorem and vehicle decal fees, I used really more of an adjustment to the collection rate. So Morrisville's collection rate on those tends to be about 99.9%. So I followed the advice of the tax assessor, and I actually dropped the collection rate in the calculation for my estimates for those. So those still show some growth, not as much as it normally would have because of the collection concern. The ones that are particular in using the approach of flattening, we're really focusing on sales tax, utility sales tax, and video programming, to name a few. And then the other one I'm going to point out is that collection of development services revenues. I've always tended to have a strategy where I take that strong conservative approach on purpose because it's an unpredictable source, even though I have adjusted up commercial permits. I tend to hold what I call a rolling average approach or a flat, kind of a flat-line approach, even with those revenues for the purposes of helping us when interest earnings, for example, don't materialize in a way that we anticipate, or sales tax takes a stronger hit. We might experience more in development services revenues than I have anticipated, depending on the activity that comes in there. So what I look at is how many preliminary meetings is planning having, what type of development is in the queue to go through site plan approval processes that could cause engineering fee revenue, planning fee revenues, and ultimately permit fee revenues. And I sort of use that as a qualitative assessment for that particular revenue group. Does that help answer your question?
That does help. And then just to kind of tie in and follow up, you talked a lot about using strategies to manage throughout the budget year, which is going to be important, too, because we don't have a crystal ball. So I know, you know, we're all, you all and we all are going to do the best we can to predict, but we have no idea what's going to happen three months, six months, nine months from now. So the, and you don't have to answer this right now, I'm not sure this is the right spot, but at some point, I want to understand a little bit more about the strategies that you're going to use to follow all these projections during the year. And then if things are even worse than we're anticipating and that you're projecting, what are we going to do? What, you know, so in other words, what's Plan B, C? What are we building in? And that might be for later on after we get through expense and all that, but I'd like to understand that as well at some point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will cover that maybe at the end after we get through with everything. Does that work for you?
Yes, it does. Sorry, I unmuted myself already. Yeah, that's perfect, Jeannie. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, don't let me forget.
Thank you, Ms. Hooks, for expanding on the conservative nature of your predictions. Councilmember Rabadi, please, has a question. Okay, we'll come back to Councilmember Rabadi.
Did you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can. Please proceed, Ms. Rabadi.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I was muted, I was double muted. So, Jeannie, I wanted to ask, I guess, the opposite of Liz's question. So I 100% agree with the approach of conservatively forecasting all incoming revenue because we don't know what's going to happen. But I would like to know, let's say that things rebound quickly or the Aquatic Center does better than we expected and things are better, so then we will have a surplus in the middle of the year. And I'm wondering, do we leave ourselves with any options if that happens to pick up some things that we may, at this time, leave out of the budget or decide to defer because we're being conservative? Can we pick those things up later, or if we say that something's out of the budget, is it out until 2021? That's sort of a newbie question, I apologize, everybody else that knows the answer.
No, that's a very good question, and it's one I'll go maybe in tandem with Mayor Protem Johnson's question at the end, but the short answer is yes. But we can, there are strategies we can accomplish mid-year if staff, after analyzing and monitoring the situation, we feel that might be appropriate. So the short answer is yes, and we'll talk more about that at the end.
Did you have anything else, Ms. Rabadi?
Did not. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella, please, your question.
Hey, Jeannie, the question I have is, I know you use a model of 3% increase every year in your budgeting, and then you're projecting 1 million to 1.4 to that. And Wake County is saying it's like 10% of their budget that they feel that they will not be able to collect. What kind of approach was used here? Because the 1 million projected loss, I'm trying to equate to how much percentage that you are really thinking that we will not be able to achieve.
So generally, the answer for that is that I normally do target for 3%. When I did my first pass, I actually brought revenues, that was before taxes were adjusted, tax rate adjustment. Revenues dropped to 1.5%. That was it. That was largely due to some of the sources I can increase and recognize, and then the others that I had to pull back offset. So it did drop this year. I can, combined with some of the other questions, produce a little bit more of a breakdown synopsis to help you understand that or to make that more clear in one of my FAQ follow-ups.
Yeah, yeah, because I wanted to follow up with what Liz was saying is the revenue streams, how much was last year, how much is this year, and what kind of factor did you put in it, saying, okay, this is a reduction of X number of percentage? So at least it will give us a real picture, because right now, when I see 1 million to 1.4, I'm also thinking the 3% growth. So these are like kind of conflicting each other.
Well, just remember that all revenues are not equal. What impacts them is very different from one source to another, and we have to approach each one of them uniquely. And I have them as classified-type sources, and what that means is I have strategies for those types of classes. So that's something I can provide you in FAQ.
And also, the other one is, I asked Martha a couple of weeks ago, and kind of this hard question is, it was interesting when you said that our ratio has drifted to 55 commercial and 45 residential now, which is good, but the other thing is, the businesses are the biggest hit. Out of that 55, how much are the small businesses component versus the brick and motor, like the big companies, which are, which can sustain, I'm hoping? We don't know the answer to that, but wanted to get a feel of that.
Okay, I will see what I can find. That one might take me a little bit of work with Wake County to access their data, but that's something I can work on.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
To clarify, Councilmember Garamella, what would you consider to be a small business? Is there a general accepted thing?
I mean to say, you know, we can, I don't know the criteria, but it could be like a small restaurant, okay, is a small business compared to Lenovo or, you know, a big building that is paid by the corporate. So that's where I'm trying to understand, how much is a component, because literally, they don't have any revenue from last three months. So we care about that compared to if it is Lenovo. It doesn't really matter because it's people there, not the sales.
Okay, so it sounds like the categories will be based on what Wake County has, and staff will bring back what they can. Okay. And one last thing about the projected loss, the consumer-sensitive resources, the losses and the declines, those were just over the last few months, like you said. And FY '21, those losses are larger because it's going to be a longer time. Would that be an accurate assessment, why it's 1.4 instead of something smaller, Jeannie?
So the first quarter and some into the second quarter is what I really looked at. Again, there's no perfect answer for the situation that we're in to project these revenues. For, in particular, sales tax, there's no data available right now because of the two-to-three month lag in receipt reporting. So we actually don't know how March has been impacted in that second-largest source, and that's something that we're waiting to receive and see. But Morrisville has done the best that it can with the information that it could obtain and in discussion with some of our partners to really project conservatively what we could. Sales tax in particular, just to give you an idea, February receipts that we just received were actually 10% higher than prior February. So that just showed you how well the market was doing, and we're probably going to see in March with those receipts really what the impact is of everything shutting down suddenly. So, long answer to your question, more information.
Okay. So at this time, we're going to start getting towards wrapping up this section so you can move on to the next. We're going to have a comment from Town Manager Page.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd actually like to go ahead and make two comments.
just following up on what Jeannie just said about the sales tax. We'll also have to remember for March, it'll be a first picture, but things were not closed down till mid-March. So even it will not reflect a full month of impact of COVID as we look at that number. It'll really be April, which we won't even see till potentially first of June or well into this budget process. Mid-June, okay. Back to Councilmember Garamella's question about the businesses, that a reminder that the 55, 45% split is on property, not numbers of businesses. So many small businesses would be in much larger commercial property values that we would not be able to pull out that kind of detail. I think we understand what you're looking for and we'll try to find some way to provide some additional information on that.
Okay, Councilmember Fender has a question, please.
Yes, my question was similar to what Martha was just talking about. I wanted confirmation that that 55, 45 split is on the percentage of property taxes? Like the percentage of our property tax that comes from commercial is 55 and percentage that comes from residential property is 45?
Yes, the, the tax value and what it comes from, that's how that percentage is derived.
Okay, so the, the number of small businesses out of that overall commercial value is not going to affect the 55 and 45 split because the property's still there. Do you see what I'm asking?
You mean for tax payment purposes? They still have to pay the taxes?
Well, the prop, the property is still owned by someone. So if it's a small business or not, only really affects the sales revenue, not the property tax revenue. If the, whatever small business, it's still, someone's still going to own it and still got to pay the property taxes on it. So I don't see how that would affect.
So there might not be a correlation between physical business, small businesses versus this assessed value percentage. So staff can work on that and we can reach out and get some information to try to really address, really what you both are, are talking about.
Okay.
Okay?
And if we could take a moment and circle back to Councilmember Garamella, I think he might have a comment on that. And then we'll let Jeannie continue with her presentation. Councilmember Garamella?
Yeah, what I meant to say is, in the 55 component, the main thing that I'm trying to look for is, yeah, Donna is correct, it won't change the property value. But many people, small businesses are shutting down. So eventually, they will not be able to pay the rent. I'm trying to look at how much of that effect we'll start seeing. Because is, is the big businesses 30 or 40% of that 55%? That is not rentable, those are like corporates. So that's where I'm trying to understand where, because sales tax, yes, obviously, but also if these guys are not able to pay rent and they had to shut down, how much of that creates more impact to our tax? That's my point.
It could definitely become a ripple effect. So Ms. Hooks, back to you.
All right, good conversation. So here are some facts about revaluation outcome and revenue neutral. 20% overall, as I mentioned, has been the growth from reappraisal on our tax base. Of that, our annual average natural growth in, in that four-year period is 3%. That's, that's pretty typical for Morrisville. Now, year to year, there are some, some differences, but the average growth over the period ends up being 3%. The value, the assessed value drivers that, that I mentioned to you guys several months ago, they are the commercials, specifically hotel and apartments. And yes, apartments are viewed as commercial in the property tax world. Those are businesses. The residential, it, it really, the value drivers came from homes that actually were less than $250,000. So that means they were the primary focus of really how this 20% came about. One caveat I would mention to, to council is to please remember when we're talking about revaluation, reappraisal and revenue neutral in particular, is that values can be different from one property to another. It really depends on the type of property it is, its location, its age, structure, that sort of thing, that all contributes to, to really the value that gets assessed. So revenue neutral is, is a requirement to, to calculate an estimated tax rate that is essentially to sustain the same ad valorem revenue as average growth as, with an average growth factor applied, that's that 3%, as if no reappraisal occurred. So it just keeps everything, it's meant to be to keep everything as static or the same from, from one year to the next with an average growth factor applied. You're not, as council, you're not required to adopt a revenue neutral. It's for the purposes of transparency during a reappraisal process. Council is required to set a tax rate each year that's, that's meant to support the desired level of service that you want to provide and the projects that you feel the community needs. You may elect to go revenue neutral. However, it will not sustain or support concurrent growth, growing service levels as we're experiencing now. And it would be difficult to align to your, your strategic goals if revenue neutral were to say the same. Basically, doing so might be considered as maybe a kick the can moment. And, and not doing some things that, that you need to address your growing demands, they tend to catch up with you at some point down the road. So there's just things that I've experienced in the past and observed when we're faced with these types of decisions, important decisions. Reappraisal of property, as I mentioned, really right sizes the market values and it redistributes that, that tax burden fairly across all properties. So, so the property values were four years, four years old before and they're now current. The proposed budget does leverage a tax rate, again, as I mentioned, to retain some of that capacity, but it's meant for reinvestment in the community services and to meet those growing needs. So here I wanted to provide you with really what I feel is a simple illustration of, of specific types of properties, just to give you some context. These are generic, they're just for illustrative purposes only. It's a type of residential property and then a type of commercial property post-revaluation. So as you can see, the, the impact overall, if we went four cents above to try to retain some of that, that capacity and went four cents above a revenue neutral for, for a home value that was 290,000, it was reappraised, it's now 350. It would ultimately mean another $140,000. That's what that four cents would represent. Comparably to, for the commercial sample, a $12 million property, it was reappraised and valued at 15 million. Overall, the four cents above a revenue neutral would, might mean $5,000 more on the annual tax bill for a $15 million piece of property. So those are just generic samples. And again, I'm going to pause here because these are important, two very important slides to see if there are any questions that I would want to collect to provide in FAQ.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Jeannie, my question is, the concerns I have after hearing some of this data, I'm, I'm actually, you know, I'm concerned about the sales tax, you know, the sales revenue being down by 14% because that really hits consumer confidence. And it may come back, but it might take it a while. And also, the uncertainty. I mean, the good news is development is still going on and we know that we have growth needs. But I'm just, you know, as I'm looking at this budget, you know, my concern is that, you know, wouldn't we want to? I mean, I'm not averse to, I'm not going to make any decision tonight about the tax rate, but I just want to sort of get these thoughts out there. We've, we've already been using some of the reserves that we have in fund balance. But couldn't we, during this uncertain time, use some of that extra reserve cash to, to, to address the $1 million shortfall so that if we did increase taxes, or maybe we, we wouldn't cover the whole four cent, maybe it'd be two cents worth of it? Because to me, the thing that just makes it hard for me is the uncertainty. The fact that we don't know where we're going to be if like development were to take a tick down, if COVID spikes up in the winter time. You know, I mean, there's a lot of uncertainties. I don't want to be Negative Nellie, but I'm just trying to think through, you know, as we look at this decision. I did have a discussion with the mayor earlier today and I do feel comfortable better that other towns have gone above revenue neutral. And, and so it's something that people are doing. But that would be one thing I would like you to put in a frequently asked questions document is, to what extent can we use our reserves to weather us through this six-month period of uncertainty? Maybe less, but not even the economists know when we're going to get back to a new normal. And then they don't even know what the new normal is going to be like.
Okay, I will, I will work on that one and I'll provide you with some, some, some facts and some best practices when it comes to use of fund balance.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like you've worked really hard to be conservative and to preserve our reserves. But look forward to that FAQ answer.
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Fender has a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that in reading the, the budget report here, I was very surprised that the tax rate for the town of Morrisville had not been changed since the last revaluation cycle in fiscal year 2017, when it was adjusted to revenue neutral plus the 1 half cent to be allocated, a roadway and transportation reserve. And that actually, no additional capacity, where it is, the town has historically, in almost 30 years, not increased taxes other than to support bond debt for voter-approved capital projects in 2012 and 2014. So I think it's very important to note that as the town has grown over the past 30 years and the property values have increased, past town councils have consistently kept decreasing the, the property tax rate and not taking any advantage of property values increasing. And so the result of that is now today, we are playing catch-up for those past decisions. And, you know, I just think that needs to be, the public needs to be aware of that and it needs to be in our thought process when we look, when we're considering what items to put in the budget and what tax rate to go with moving forward.
Thank you for sharing that. We're going to go to Councilmember Rabadi and then Councilmember Rao has a comment, but we want to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak before we loop around. So Councilmember Rabadi, please.
I just wanted to, to echo what Donna said and also to add that as, as we try to establish what Morrisville is going to be going forward, I don't think that, I don't think that it necessarily behooves us to have the goal of keeping either the tax rate the same or, you know, achieving revenue neutrality. I think that really the way to look at this is more, what, what is it that we want to do? What did we talk about at the retreat? I don't, I don't think that, I understand that, that everything has changed. I get that. But I don't think that we need to, I want to be conservative, but I don't want to be conservative so much that we hamper ourselves and we don't realize the vision for what our town could be. And I think that, you know, there is going to be a downturn in the economy and we will all face that together and we will come out of it better than we were before. Having said that, I just want to make sure that we, that we continue to selectively invest in our town and to understand what people want. Because the decisions that we make now, if they're, if they're COVID-driven and economic uncertainty-driven, I think we're doing a disservice to our town. Because I, I just think that we, whatever downturn there is will not last forever. And I don't want to be another council that looks back and says we had opportunity and we wasted it. Those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Councilmember Rao, and then let's get questions into the question box. Otherwise, we're going to let Jeannie move ours along.
It'll be my last comment until the end. But I, my only comment is, I, I appreciate Councilmember Fender's comments and Councilmember Rabadi. But I would just, for the public listening and the, and the council, remind everybody that we've been, I think previous councils have done a great job leading the town. And it wasn't that we were trying to hold the tax rate down. Over the last nine years, and Liz Johnson's been here a lot longer than me, we've been able to manage because of that healthy balance of commercial and residential revenue. Any other town in our county and state would be envious to have that kind of a growth rate. And it's because of that kind of a growth rate that we've been able to have so much of that success. And I think that it's responsible to also consider the impact on the business community because they're the ones that are paying for that growth. We are going to reach a time when growth is going to slow down, as Ms. Hooks said. And when that time comes, we can increase taxes. And I'm not saying that I'm against increasing taxes today. I'm open to that from revenue neutral. But I do think it is misleading to the public, and I'm not saying that you intentionally did that, but I think the public in Morrisville needs to know that it's that commercial revenue and growth which has put us in the position we are today, which is to be one of the fastest-growing towns in the region and the state. And I just wanted to say that to respond, thank you.
Thank you. We'll pass it back to Ms. Hooks to continue the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So now we'll move into expenditures, again focusing on general fund and stormwater. So slicing up the expenditure pie, as I call it, here are some highlights to just share as you, as you look at these pie charts. Public safety, budget overall, if you, if you take it on its face value and compare it to 2020, it does have a slight decrease. But the, the reality here is, in fiscal year 20, there was a large planned apparatus replacement. So that sort of skews the comparison. But when we neutralize that, public safety really has shown an increase of about 7.8% over fiscal year 20, if you were to remove that apparatus anomaly. And just, just for grins, that, a fire apparatus, pretty expensive. It's about $1.2 million, so pretty big skew there. Public safety additions are largely related to us adding personnel over the years and achieving our goal to, to realize the quaint concept, to add public police officers on, on the streets and provide for that. So those have been big changes to that particular grouping of expenditures. Public Works has indicated a slight increase, as they normally really do this time of year, likely due to shifts in planned equipment replacements and, and other inflationary factors that, that impact some of our contracted services, more so the, the solid waste and recycling. Parks has increased over fiscal year 20, budgeted by 11%. That's really due to the renovation expansion of MFC and its, its planned reopening for the past couple of years. For the past couple of years, we've had some reduction there because the facility wasn't opened. And then, of course, we have some other very important planned or expanded programs, such as the senior center and then backfilling the space that the seniors, seniors will not take up in Cedar Fork Community Center with expanding our preschool program. We've always had a pretty good following with our, with our youth revenues that are really generated by that preschool program. Those are really the lead contributors for parks. Growth and development services is primarily due to kicking off and starting a smart shuttle public transportation service. This is a new service that you're offering and it does impact operations overall. And the other influence here is traffic flow and congestion improvement, putting monies in the budget to try and work on addressing those this year in the ways that we can. The smart shuttle does, I will mention, we did recognize a 50% grant, but remember, it's a 50% grant. You still have to work on coming up with the other portion to handle this new operational impact year over year. General government, it really represents approximately 6% increase over prior year. That's largely due to the way in which we're shifting debt service out of the general fund into a separate debt service fund. And that's for tracking and really the ability to retain that retired debt annually to put towards future debt. So that's, that's really the influence for, for this particular grouping. Stormwater growth overall, the, the increase is primarily due to a one-time expense for master plan development. That's going to be important for next step discussions on, on where do we take the stormwater fee in the future to meet really what the program was designed or meant to accomplish to beat the mandates of the state. A great level of detail is offered in the budget priority summary on page 29 that really show what those new influences and priorities are that have impacted these groupings that I'm showing here. So let's talk about really your largest expense overall. If you were to break them down by classification of expenses, it's personnel. It's over 54% of your budget. It grew by 11% over the original budget for 20. We are a service oriented organization. And what that means is it takes people to meet the service demands of the community as it grows. That's simply put. We have suggested an implementation strategy to really manage and control that spending within the observed inflows of revenues as they occur through the year and, and, and how revenues might be impacted. So that's that some being implemented full year and then many of them being implemented a half year. So that helps us manage and control how fiscal year 21 might be impacted. These positions really address workload needs, continuation of initiatives in progress and the growing programs and services that the strategic plan is really looking for that we have adopted. So I'm going to, I'm sorry, I did not advance the slide. I apologize. I will stop here. We have proposed four full year requests and we have nine half year requests. So I'm going to pause here and see if there are any questions on personnel. And I do apologize, I did not advance the slide appropriately.
Okay, so people are taking a second to take a closer look at that slide. We've already received this in advance. I'll recognize councilmember Rabadi who has a question.
Sorry, um, yes, I wondered, did you, um, did you consider at all the idea of a, an economic development person when you were making the budget?
So I will refer that to Town Manager Page.
Thank you. Remembering that the budget was well, well, well in development before the, the COVID situation occurred, not at the initial stages as the, the chamber has worked to address those needs and deal with their own internal concerns. I acknowledge that may be a discussion, but the, the strategy and policy and what council would be looking for in that type of position had not been discussed ever as a part of budget planning. So if, if council is interested in that, I think, one, we have a contract with the chamber. We have a partner that we should include in that conversation, especially if there are concerns that need to get addressed. And, and then a real understanding of what council would want to include in that before I think we could program it effectively into a budget.
Okay, thank you for that. Did you have any follow up, councilmember Rabadi, or a different question about personnel?
Yes, I wondered what the, I see the network and security administrator and the enterprise system administrator, and I'm wondering if those two positions could be somehow combined.
Said an FAQ?
Yes.
Yes, it's an FAQ, yeah.
I will take this offline and discuss with Rick and with our finance director. I would say based on their job descriptions, they are fundamentally different, but I will work on capturing that information succinctly in an FAQ question, if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson please has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I, as I look at this personnel details, I am reminded that staff is the most important, you know, part of this budget. And we have to be very mindful of our existing staff and their job security. I'm a little concerned that as we move forward in the uncertain times, if we commit to 13 full-time positions and then something happens, we might be facing some difficult choices. So I understand the commitments that the council has made for some of the programming where the full year request makes a lot of sense. It's regarding our expanding IT infrastructure, our cloud-based, you know, enterprise systems, the, you know, MAFCs, the senior center, that, that, those related positions. But in the second half of the year, I know I've seen that traffic patrol unit being ramped up. That's new. Could we consider putting those nine positions on hold as we look, you know, as we move forward? Do they need to start in six months? Could they start in a year when we know a little bit more about where our revenue streams are? So I, I'm kind of mixed in, in looking at this and, and supporting it because I, I'm concerned that we first need to fully support our existing staff, meet our commitments, but then, you know, it's too far in advance looking at those half-year positions for me at this time without really digging in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Town Manager Page, did you want to comment or add anything here?
No, I will affirm that what councilmember Scroggins-Johnson has mentioned is the tough choices that went in. As Jeannie mentioned, we would be talking about some of the implementation triggers that would defer or hold even those half-year requests until that point in time. But, but as you're fully aware, that this is your deliberation and discussion. And if council wants to see models in alternative scenarios than have been presented, staff is going to work on that and bring that back to you.
Thank you very much. Anything else, councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
No, I, I have more later on different topics. This is one that was dear to my heart, so thank you.
Okay. I believe Mayor Pro Tem Liz Johnson has a comment and then we'll let Jeannie do her last personnel slide. And then we might take a break at that point. So Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Thank you. I, I too want to ask a little bit about the nine positions that would come on mid-year. And I, and I don't, you don't have to answer this now, it could become part of the, the Q and A, but what are the triggers you're going to look for, Martha? Because in your, in your document, you talk about triggers, but I, there wasn't detail around that. So I, I'd like to know what those triggers would be. And just so for, for the rest of council, so you understand where I'm coming from. I've been parts of budgets where we have, we have done financially well with our revenue streams and we have been able to therefore fund more projects mid-year, mid-budget year, or, or after we've gotten our CAFRA report and we see, you know, we see where our fund balance is. So I know how to, I know how to operate in a world where things work out better than we think. And I like that world. The world where I've also been parts of budget years, and luckily they've been very few, but I also have been parts of budget years where our revenues were pulled out from under us mid-year. And that is a scenario that is incredibly difficult and one that I want to avoid at all costs. And I think Jeannie does too, because I hear, I hear it in her presentation and Jeannie knows what I'm talking about. Those are the scenarios that I want to make sure that we are prepared for. And I also hope that they never happen. My, my hope is that we prepare for the worst. We prepare, prepare for it to be the absolute worst and then be incredibly surprised and be able to fund much more than we anticipated in whatever budget we adopt. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. So that kind of ties in here too. And clearly you all are thinking about that as well because you are bringing forward a suggestion for the majority of these positions not even to come on from day one. So, so anyhow, my, my, my question here at this moment for this issue is, what are those triggers that would make you not move forward on hiring these additional positions? And whenever I can get that information is fine, tonight or, or in the Q and A.
So Mayor, if I may, because I think it's going to influence council's discussion and deliberation of every item in this budget. I think it might be important to go ahead and just provide a high level overview of what we mean by that anyways. So we have natural points in our financial and budget year where things happen. And, and one of the first things that happened, and Mayor Pro Tem Johnson has technically already mentioned it, is that we close out our fiscal year June 30 and right at the end of September, beginning of October, we get a clear picture of our fiscal year 20 operation results. We will have a clear and accurate picture, not only of what our revenues came in at as compared to our projections. We will also know what we've spent, what will roll into our fund balance or our savings and, and build or detract, but build from that capacity. And most in particular in this year, as, as Jeannie mentioned, those sales taxes in particular lag. And by September or October, we will have 90 days of real comparable performance metric based results as compared to projected sales tax, what they really came in. So Jeannie will be able to validate her revenue forecasts, not only for 20, but to be able to re-forecast for fiscal year 21. So that is an important point where we also, also really understand what our fund balance is and what percentage we have as compared to some of those one-time initiatives. The second trigger is that mid-year forecast that we do at the end of the year that is really the start of the next year budget process. But rather than just roll into a fiscal year 22 budget preparation, we would be bringing that to you and, and really seeking reauthorization or verification before we would just proceed with mid-year implementation. The, what's the difference? Well, the difference from a staff base is preparation, planning, knowing what the priorities are, the message to the community about what the priorities are, rather than starting a laundry list process mid-year about what we might want to program and forecast. So that was really the premise behind incorporating them in a budget, but with a mid-year trigger. So I think one of the important things is that information would come back to council for authority to proceed rather than just knowing it's programmed mid-year. And there are both personnel and operational items that are included in that list as we continue this discussion.
And thankfully, the strategic plan gives us a framework from which to move forward with those things. So it's great to have a sneak peek at what we might be able to do moving forward. So Jeannie's going to go over this last slide. We'll have any questions about it. And then we're going to take a break and move on to our next work session. Jeannie Hooks?
Okay, so, so this one's a very simple one. It, it talks about the other needs to really upfit the new positions that are proposed, such as vehicles and really technology equipment. And in, if they're public safety, there's a certain amount of PPE gear that comes with that. Another item here is, or two items I'll take in tandem, are the impacts to our personnel overall with benefit increases with health and then, of course, the local government retirement system increases that we are required to incorporate. And it's important to recognize your employees. So pay adjustments at a 3% flat rate have been proposed for all full-time staff in a year where we have suspended the performance evaluation process due to COVID at this time. So that, in a nutshell, is other personnel details.
Okay, that was pretty straightforward. Did anyone have any comments or questions about that part of the presentation? Okay, hearing none. Right now it's 8:21. We're going to take a 10-minute break and then reconvene to start discussion of bond referendum CIP. And we'll finish this presentation about budget at a later work session. Fortunately, we're going to have lots of opportunities. So I would ask that everyone please reconvene at 8:32. Back at your mics and please silence your mics now for the next 10 minutes. Thank you. At this time, we're going to go into a closed session and there will be no other public business after the closed session. So thank you once again for joining us. I'll recognize councilmember Rao at this time to take us into closed session. Then we'll take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 9:28. Councilmember Rao.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to North Carolina statute 143.318.11A5, I move that we go into closed session for the purposes of discussing a real property acquisition matter.
I have a motion from councilmember Rao. Do I have a second? I recognize Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Rao, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Johnson to go into closed session. Could I please have a roll call vote? Town Clerk Smith.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Rabadi? Councilmember Rabadi?
I'm sorry, I got muted again. Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to enter closed session carries unanimously.
Okay, it is 9:19. Please reconvene at 9:28. We are ending this meeting completely. Please stay near your computers. Please stay near your computers. Thank you all. Good evening. It's 8:32. We're going to reconvene. We are now on item 11B, which is titled CIP slash bond referendum development preliminary ballot questions. I turn it back to Jeannie Hooks, Ms. Hooks.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just to mention, if council did have any questions, if we don't have time to come back to these budget priority highlights, they are actually outlined in great detail, starting on page 29. And it also is something that if you have questions about these items and we don't get them, to them tonight, if you would just email Martha and myself your questions by 5:00 PM tomorrow, I will incorporate them into our FAQ document.
If I could add one wrinkle to that, if you also include the rest of the town council on your questions, that way we don't ask the same question twice.
Absolutely. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. No, it was a suggestion by one of the other council members, actually, I think. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson suggested that.
All right, so let's talk about continuing our bond referendum discussion. As we left off, you, council elected to hold till you had some information about the budget to really make a key decision to either move forward with a bond referendum in 2020 or to hold the bond referendum pause on it due to COVID impacts. So some of those, those impacts for you to consider as you think about budget, capacity, revenue concerns, needing to deliver core services or growing services, is, does COVID really change the town's strategy and timing for a future bond referendum? Does it shift the town's immediate focus from future investments to the preservation and protection of essential core operations? Does it influence, this one's an important one, does it influence the voter approval rating and the public perception on the town's request to access a geo-bond debt instrument to invest those tax dollars? And then it has lessened the ability for us to effectively do that, that front-loaded public engagement. I'm going to also point out, even postponing the decision to this meeting has condensed the amount of time to work effectively with our bond council to do all of the formal legwork that's necessary to, to move forward. So I just want to point that out. It's going to take a lot of effort to get to work with them from this point forward. There's a lot of logistical paperwork that has to go to LGC, go back to council, be approved, be heard twice, have a public hearing. That, that all takes time. So I'm just sharing that with you to give some context. I'll turn it over to you, Mayor. Staff is looking for direction tonight in order for us to proceed.
I believe the preliminary ballot questions as presented will actually meet our needs and meet the requirements of the timeline to continue. We are, of course, disappointed that there is not the opportunity to have the robust public input into that language, but we are thankful that staff has already spent so much time explaining the most suitable bond packages over these last few months, even before COVID-19 occurred. So I guess my question is, assuming, as we always have been, that we are going to do it in November, so even though it's condensed, this is work that has been going on, what is the next important milestone or decision for the council before we truly start expending funds in this effort?
So let me make sure I understand your question. So just for clarification, so are you asking for the amount of funds that we would incorporate in this budget to put towards a bond referendum?
Well, that's already in the budget.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Right.
So, so yeah, so the direction that council has given is that we're planning to have a referendum in November, and staff has been working towards that direction. And so we have preliminary ballot language, and I, my understanding that June 1st, that needs to be formalized, and that's the big nest, next milestone. I also understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, that most of the expenditure of funds happens during our public engagement outreach and when the bonds are actually issued. So I want to allay the concern that there might be a lot of money going out the door for something that may or may not happen, depending on our opinion that the bonds may or may not pass in November.
So I'm not sure that it's a question so much about the monies we've expended, the expensive funds for planning for a bond referendum really materialize, begin to materialize now when you engage your, your bond council and your financial advisors. So we do have some of that, but primarily the biggest part of it comes at this point in your formal process. I think what staff wants to communicate and council, Town Manager Page can weigh in on this following the comments. The, the preliminary concern, the primary concern of staff is, is the time to get the education out to the community of what this ballot language is, what it means, the aligning of the details related to the projects, to be able to not only communicate and educate to the public, but really to stand in front of LGC and make our case. So that, that's the type of timeline that we're, we're working against now. And all of that for LGC really has to occur the first part of June in order to meet the formal instrument requirements that have to come forward to council, that sort of move back and forth through June, July, and parts of August.
And, and I'll just go ahead and add, and I want to make sure I'm also understanding the mayor's question about the expenditure of funds. The, the guidance that council gave us for a November 20 ballot had some specific desires about a process for engaging with the public, including the alignment of projects within identified ballot language, that, that is the primary factor that is, is really of issue in this discussion. Council gave a specific direction on that because of some of the things that have happened that has not occurred. Council could change that, but that was not the direction staff was given for a November 2020 bond referendum. The next step when we got stalled was to look at that preliminary ballot language and then start aligning the projects that council would want us to take to the public to get input and feedback before final project selection was made. And that's the, the loss of timing that we're really asking the primary question about.
And I, and I would add, just tag on just a little bit more with that, just for, for transparency purposes, not being able to put that information out there does cause staff some concern about how are voters prepared to really effectively respond to this question if it were put on their ballot for them. And I think just my fear is, while, while Morrisville's not experienced voters denying a geo-bond debt, it doesn't mean it's not ever happened before in the world. And I think under the COVID is, is the concern is, do they have other things on their mind right now that turnout, it might impact turnout, it could impact overall the approval or deny. And, and, and I think I say that on purpose to protect council for, for, for not, if, if you were to be faced with voters not approving it, you're, you really put yourself in a corner with needing to do those projects. So I think timing is something to, for council to reconsider in light of the climate that we're in. I think that's just staff's responsibility to point that out, but.
It's obviously a steeper hill. Councilmember Rao, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I mean, I, first of all, you know, I, I was a little bit leery of doing this in 2020, but then Mayor Colley and a lot, and the council convinced me that it was the right thing to do. And my concern, and I'm really torn on this, is I really want to move forward on these projects, but my concern is just the timing, whether we have enough time to inform the public. And with everything going on with these phase one, phase two, phase three reopenings, the best way to engage the public is doing the information sessions in town hall or going to neighborhoods, which may be tough because of social distancing. And then the, and whether we have full council support, knowing that every bond we've ever passed, we've gone all in, all unanimous, put it out there, worked with the business community, the chamber, and I just don't, I just don't know if that support is there. So for me, it's the timing, is the timing correct? And I don't, I want to hear from my other colleagues, and that's my concern, is this year, it's a bit of a shift, but we never saw this pandemic coming, do we focus on the, the needs? We just went over the operational needs, the growth needs, focus on that, and then put this to 2021. But it's the timing for me, the public engagement, and the council and business support that I'm concerned of. So I just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Do other council members want to weigh in? Councilmember Robati, please.
You know, I think that, I think that one of the best ways that we can help our small businesses and help our community to recover from an economic downturn is to continue to invest in our community. You know, I'm just throwing that out there as kind of the other side of the coin. I think that it inspires public confidence and inspires confidence in the business community when they see us continuing to invest in our town. And I also, I'm not exactly clear on the timing of when, of when the bond money starts to cost us anything. But my understanding from when I spoke to Martha this morning was that it would be in July of 2021 that we would, you know, that we would start recouping money from the bond to do projects with. So I think that, you know, I think that with the bond, we would provide ourselves with the maximum amount of flexibility to do the projects that are really important to us and that, and to the town, and that we identified as things that we would do. So it's just another, you know, it's just kind of another side, I guess, of the coin of how, you know, how it's going to look to people. Like, I'm definitely sensitive to all the concerns you raised, Steve, also. I mean, I think that's definitely a lot in what you said.
So to confirm, Councilmember Robati, the issuance is when, when we issue is when we would begin to incur debt service payments, not when we are asking the voters to, for authority to access a debt instrument. So, so Martha, Town Manager Page is correct, it probably wouldn't be until July 2021 before we would even issue any part of a voter-approved bond. Depending on the projects and their readiness at that time.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So the bond, to me, is an important investment in our future. My big concern is the timing, because it's very important to me that our public have sufficient time to digest and also to give us feedback in order to shape this bond request. We can still do the projects without a voter-approved bond, there's other debt service kind of vehicles, but it's really important that we show transparency to our public and get their support for these projects as well. Without having true outreach from both the business community and the public residences and the neighborhoods, I'm, I'm not sure that we're really doing a good service. Certainly, we could get the resident input through a vote in November, but we haven't really had a chance to look at the business community and figure out ways to solicit their feedback as well. And that's a gap. And it's also a missed opportunity because we are on a stay-at-home order, which is extraordinary, and it's, we never would have predicted this when we were going down the path to look for a bond. So I'm in support of a bond proposal, but not this fiscal year. I think it's better to have this bond proposed next fiscal year. One calendar year will give us a lot of opportunity to finish the projects that we need to finish, such as MAFC. That was based on a bond in 2012. And the messaging that might occur if we push for a bond this year is, we haven't even finished the bond projects from 2012. That's not optically positive, and I know there's been delays, and they are justifiable delays, but yet we need to finish all of our bond projects, in the past bond, I believe, before we ask for more money. So I'm not comfortable with this fiscal year asking for the bond. So thanks.
Any other council members want to weigh in? Okay. So it sounds like.
I believe we have Councilmember Garamella?
Now, I see that. Thank you very much. Councilmember Garamella?
I have a couple of questions, you know, because the thought process, even putting the bond language, where you're putting $9 million towards transportation. And I was thinking, ever since I got Brandon's email, that Marshall Carpenter is not going to happen, and we don't have a date when it will start. It, it puts a lot of things at a back burner now, because all our transportation projects are, we are heavily, heavily dependent on, from the DOT. We can just do our side of the funding, it's the max, but if it's a great separation of the areas, we just can't do that. So I, I want to have like a full approach, might be from Benjamin, because what is going on, you know, now, like with $9 million, do we need nine right away? Or do we even need more in that to do our projects? Or it's not worth putting nine right now because DOT doesn't have any money and they are not going to support any projects? So, so those are the kind of discussions that I am looking for, because that helps me make addition about the bond. And right now, we don't have any of that, other than the language that we talked about in, back in February where everything was good. Now, how do we move forward?
Town Manager Page, did you want to talk about really monies that we already have set aside for continuing work at this particular time towards some of these items?
So it, I, I think that what Jeannie might be referring to is that there are several CIP projects that you were put sources of funds to, to, to get them started. And this was one of the things that we've talked about with some of our bond projects in the past, and our delays, especially with bond projects, getting them completed within a reasonable and timely amount of time, is if they're not what are called shovel-ready, then that is what delays some of the timelines for issuing debt. So the commitments towards fire stations and Airport Boulevard and the park projects, move those projects along so that we're prepared when we have the remainder of the funding anticipated through a bond referendum available to us. So it, it's another, you want to ensure the rest of the funding is going to occur because we've invested in the front end of the project. For those projects we've just mentioned, we also are able to continue those projects for some period of time through this year until there's another major decision point. We haven't talked about CIP, and we'll come back to that also related. Also related to that is our Morseville Carpenter Road project and some of the budget message really strongly recommended maintaining our fund balance presence for that project to make sure that when we can activate that, we can activate that. I understand Councilmember Garamella's a, a, a big picture type of question, which I think is, is valid. We are planning on pursuing those discussions with N C D O T. Just have not occurred to try to really provide some sense of when those things are going to occur to help better inform your decisions. Jeannie, have I covered what you wanted me to cover?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to make sure that, that council understood that, that they made decisions that put those monies aside and that work can continue regardless of if it's a 2020 bond referendum or 2021, progress can still occur. And I would add caveat to, to park projects. You even have potentially, while it's a, a source that's diminishing, you, you do have available, available reserves in Parkland Payment and Lou that could potentially also help. And park projects in general have opportunities for grants as well. That while they're not a hundred percent, they do help and add to moving projects along.
Yeah, I, I, I get Jeannie, what you're saying. And my, I'm not specifically talking about, there are two things. One, which is in our control, one which is not in our control. The one which is in our control are the parks, you know, the, are the fire stations, perfectly fine. But the transportation projects, like even Airport Boulevard, you, you take the money from the bond and start using it. But if there is a delta of like five years gap in between we used and really when we got something from them to complete the project, that doesn't, the optics doesn't look very good for the town saying that we have spent our money, we're just waiting for DOT whenever they're ready for it. But that's where I was kind of going towards.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender has a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been really on the fence with this bond referendum since the occurrence of the pandemic. Cause originally I wanted to be very aggressive about moving forward with road construction projects. And we know that we're going to have to move fire station number two. That is a given. And then just with the parks and land acquisition, we need to be aggressive about that as well if we want to maintain any of our green space. But I will say that Councilmembers Scroggins-Johnson does make a good point in that, you know, now with Morseville Carpenter Road being delayed. And I'm not sure if we know what the schedule will be now for. I know Councilmembers Scroggins-Johnson talked about the great separation at McCrimmon. I don't know if that included the entire widening of McCrimmon Boulevard from Chapel Hill Road all the way up to Davis or not. But those are two projects that are still in the pipeline that we, we need to get, well, we need to get Morseville Carpenter going. And, and then the McCrimmon Boulevard widened as well. And so I am more leaning toward delaying the bond referendum. As much as I hate to say it, you know, because I don't think turnout will be an issue this year with it being a presidential election. However, just with our current situation, I don't want to go all out there and not have the timeline, not be able to do the preparation with the, the public in the bond fail when we may have, we could, as Jeannie is saying, we could keep moving forward on a lot of these projects and go for the bond referendum in 2021.
Okay. Thank you. I just wrapped up a little bit that the bonds are simply a financial tool seen as the least expensive source of funding other than fund balance, which has no interest at all. And it just provides the authorization to issue debt in the next seven years. Understandable that N C D O T might not be able to handle everything. So we might have to step up and do a little bit more. There'd be no requirement to do it for the next year, but it would just provide us a legal authority to do so. It's quite flexible, provides a level of readily accessible capital to keep our larger projects moving forward. It does not obligate us to do so. I actually don't see any downside and I truly, truly believe that in November, our stakeholders will be seeking an opportunity to say, yes, please show us how we can invest in a better future and facilitate this recovery. The only way these bonds don't pass, I think, is if they're not on the ballot. We have an increasingly effective communications department and we haven't really made an attempt to reach out to the citizens over the last couple of months. So that was truly the last direction that we gave staff. But those residents who have been paying attention have seen Jeannie's presentations in the past about what were really the bond worthy projects. I think giving our communication staff a couple of weeks to actually start that outreach and share with the public what could be on these bond referendums and how they could benefit the town and give us the flexibility that we need to make sure that we're advancing the projects that are so important and that we've started and committed, I think will be important. And if we hear from the state, from our residents that, no, we don't think roadways are that important right now, or we don't think investing in parks is an issue right now, we'd rather put that on hold or that fire stations aren't important to keep moving, then I will also consider not continuing this. But for right now, there isn't a whole lot of downside in actually trying to do a little bit of that outreach rather than just being afraid that it's too late. I don't think it's too late and we will not have any in person until after phase three, but that's okay. We can do some really good virtual engagement. And we've had some good success with that so far. So those are my thoughts. And it looks like Mayor Pretem Johnson would like to make a comment.
Yes, thank you. So this is, this is a really painful conversation to have. I, I have been a supporter of this bond. I was a huge supporter and pushed for the 2012 bond. And when, when council was discussing, and, and I've also pushed for a bond strategy. I'd like us to, to actually have a plan moving forward and strategically plan our bonds. And, and when we talked about a bond in recent times, we talked about 2020 and 2021, and I pushed for 2020. So, so it is painful for me to, to now have to kind of rethink if that's really the right thing to do anymore. And, and you've all said it beautifully, like timing is really important. This idea of getting really robust input from our citizens is critical to make sure a bond passes. And we have always done that in the past and always been successful. But now we're in a, in a new world. And while it's our residents that will actually vote on this, you all just heard, they're not the only ones that are impacted by a bond that comes with a tax increase. More than 50% of the revenue that we get comes from our business community. It is critically important that our business community be involved in this process upfront and that they buy into a bond because they're going to pay the lift when, when the bill comes due on a tax increase. And again, we have been incredibly successful in our partnership with the chamber to make sure that has happened. As, as you, most of you know, when, when we advertise for a bond, the town needs to be in a very neutral position. The town cannot advocate one way or the other. But the chamber always has, and the chamber has advocated on our behalf and told our citizens to vote in favor of our bonds. And I, we're going to be missing all of that. Could we capture some of that? Sure. Will it be as robust as we wanted it to be? I don't think so. And that, that pains me greatly, but I think that's, that's important that we make sure that we're including them moving forward. So I, I, I'm not sure we can do that in a very thoughtful and meaningful way right now. And, and, and Councilmember Garamella said something very important. He talked about maybe we need to rebalance our needs. And I, I, I think he's right. I think the, the bond values and the bond questions that we have in front of us now and we have talked about for months and years, I'm not sure now. I think he's right. Maybe, maybe they won't be the right way to go. Maybe we need to rebalance them and think about them a bond differently moving forward now. So he gives, he gave me great pause with that, with that question. And then, and then just two more things. I think this idea of investing in our community is a critically important concept. We do not only invest in our community through bond. We invest in our community through our budget. Our budget document includes a multitude, multitude of projects that benefits our citizens and that we do to invest in our community. So while a bond referendum certainly is an investment in our community, it's not the only way we do that to instill confidence and, and to support all our, our businesses. I mean, we're, we're leasing retail space for our senior center. That's helping to shore up part of our business community. So there's things we do all the time and around, and through the year. And then the last thing I'm going to say, it was really important to me to, to get the budget information before I, I landed on a position here with the bond. Because if, and I am willing, if we are going to look at coming above revenue neutral, which is a tax increase to our citizens, if we are going to need to do that because of the times that we're in with COVID-19, I can do that. I can't do both and, and tell the citizens in just a short period of time when they're all in, in this lockdown, stay at home mode and, and phasing back into a new normal, that they're going to have like a double whammy, even knowing that, that we have control over when that tax, that bond, the tax that's associated with the bond would, would actually come to fruition. So, so having all that is that I too am deeply pained to have to say that I, I think we need to take a pause on this bomb this year and, and really understand where we're at with everything and, and then move forward hopefully as quickly as we can, but, but probably in 2021.
Councilmember Rao has a comment? Councilmember Rao, did you have a comment, sir? I believe he might be having some difficulty if we can have a comment from Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah, I, I agree with what Liz said because this is a bond for the first time I'll be going through this process. But I know that chambers plays a very, very important role. It's a more, because we as council, we can't be pitching in. I think the chambers is our official arm. And if we don't have a leadership right there, and so till we get that in place and we don't know who to approach, you know, especially we have the business community in other areas. And there is a lot of legwork that needs to be done. And I, I agree with what Liz is saying. At least it's a little off topic, but where are we in terms of, you know, with the chambers? Because we need to have that set up so that we can, it's important for a lot of other things too, like with economic development that goes around.
So there was a lot in there, but I might have to ask our attorney Frank Gray to weigh in on the ability of town council members to advocate on behalf of a bond referendum. I understand town funds cannot be expended. It's my understanding that town elected officials can be champions for saying yes to a bond. Is Mr. Gray available?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, sir.
Yes, you stated it very well. The town cannot spend public funds to advocate for the referendum. But individual council members can certainly stand up and say to the citizens, please vote for this. And here's why, and we need your vote. As individuals, you can do that. And as a council, you can ask members to, citizens to support the referendum. It's just the expenditure of public money that's protected.
Thank you. That's very helpful, sir. And yes, although not on the council, I was very involved in the, the 2012 bond, which was a lot of lawn signs and other types of outreach. And social media outreach has changed a great deal. And true, the chamber is a little bit understaffed right now. So that could be a challenge moving forward. So I believe Councilmember Rao might have a comment at this time?
Can you hear me now?
We can, sir.
Yeah, I'm having some technical issues on this end. So I, I just want to say that, Mayor, appreciate your vision. And I think that, you know, I do agree that if we couldn't move forward with this bond now, we're even better positioned to get the message out with our excellent communications department. I think that moving forward, one of the ideas that I have is that, you know, it, it's very clear, following up on Councilmember Garamella's remarks of, you know, looking at where we can come up with a transportation strategy for the town, just given where the DOT is. And that could be a combination of tying a portion of our tax rate, which we've done in the past, to build out reserves, working on road projects, number one. Number two is we develop a legislative strategy, joining the League of Municipalities and other organizations on, you know, other statewide bonds events when we get back to normal to put more money in the hands of the DOT. Because I think that in addition to the other needs, we have fire station and, and the parks. Because at the end of the day, you know, the monies just aren't there right now with them being 20 million under the legal limit by state law and also 300 million short this year. So I, I'm just concerned about, you know, any project that we put forward or any other town is just going to be canceled, terminated. And I think that message needs to be conveyed to the public about the DOT situation because our hands are sort of tied. So I just wanted to get out there, but those are things we can talk about in our next work session. And I just wanted to share those thoughts with my colleagues.
So Mayor, I wanted to just point out, we're at 9:10. Staff does need a consensus of council at this time to move forward or to pause. We need guidance.
Okay. It's kind of difficult to do that without essentially a roll call. Either pause or forward could be your response.
So Mayor, can I offer help from basically what I have heard, just as a recap?
Yeah, there was just one more. Oh, one more thought I wanted to share. Jeannie, I was wondering if you could just clarify quickly for everyone how much the parks payment and Lou has? And if we were to use that without doing a bond, if there would be any remaining capacity for any kind of land acquisition or other parks? Cause our recent Parks and Rec master plan indicated that we are short quite a few acres. And as mentioned by one of the other council members, that, that is something that is going away quickly. And as mentioned by one of the other council members, that, that is something that is going away quickly.
So I believe if I recall, Jerry Allen reported undesignated was at 2.6. And I believe I have that on my presentation. Hold on.
My point being that there's certain things that you cannot do installment or other financing for. And land acquisition is generally one of them, I understand. Roadways would be another because there's no collateral. So there's other things to keep in mind when we don't have the flexibility of these funding options.
Yes. So I'm looking at my presentation slide on reserves. And it's about 2.6 to 3 million as undesigned at this particular time for parkland payment and lieu. And, and I would agree that, that not everything is suitable for an installment loan. You, you do have to have collateral to be able to leverage. There are sometimes ways in which we can work with certain banks. But generally speaking, installment for land acquisitions can be a little tough from, basically from our financial advisors. So, so as a recap from what I'm hearing, I'm hearing Mayor Protam stating she's interested in a pause. I think it was very clear Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson was interested in pausing. I believe I also picked up on, and please correct me if I'm not recapping this correctly, council members. Councilmember Fender was interested in pausing. And I believe Councilmember Garamella, yours is a little more unclear to me, but I, I believe one of your final statements was in more agreement with, with Mayor Protam. So I'm inclined to think that you're interested in pausing at this time. Mayor, you're interested in moving ahead. And I think Councilmember Rabadi made her points clear and her interest. Again, that's just a recap from what I heard. And I would open it back up at this time.
Councilmember Rao, did you want to go ahead and clarify? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I've actually hadn't made my decision until I came to this meeting. And I, I still was actually in favor of supporting moving forward with the bond. But my, it was conditioned on council being unanimously behind it. And I just feel like it's best that we hold off for now. It's a, this is a tough decision for me. But, and for all of us. But I think that just a little bit more time. And let's move forward and see where we are in January and focus back in. And maybe we can focus on a little bit of a bigger opportunity. So, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hooks, does that give you what you need?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Ralph, for clarifying your position. So, so yes, Mayor, that does. So at this time, we're, we're at our break. As, as we mentioned before, we're, we have a number of work sessions that we can certainly pick up from where we left off. I would encourage council to send your questions between now and 5 o'clock tomorrow. And I'll incorporate them in an FAQ along with the others that we've identified. And I've enjoyed the conversation so far and your questions and, and your interest in, in working with us on this budget and moving things forward. So I appreciate your time and we will pick up with the next work session.
Thank you very much. And that would be next Tuesday, the 19th?
Yes, sir.
Is that at 6 o'clock or at 6:30?
So I believe work sessions work 6:30.
Yes. So this is Martha. Typically, yes, you're correct, Mayor, that our work sessions have started at 6:30. I think we have multiple questions in front of us. And I was sort of planning on polling council members about both a virtual, in-person or hybrid meeting and timing of that meeting, but was planning on doing that tomorrow, if that's acceptable to the group.
Okay. I think silence may be a cent on that one. So we will be meeting on the 19th in some form.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Either at 6 or at 6:30. Thank you very much for that. Okay. At this time, we have conducted the public portion of our meeting. So the public portion is ending at this time. So thank you very much for joining us for this, our second virtual meeting ever. So.